We are gonna start, so I wanted, before we actually get into to meeting our guests that we have this evening, I wanted to introduce first, I think everybody should know him, R.A. Mallon, who's not only our city auditor, but also the president of the board here for the J. Babe Stern Community Center. And Babe Stern has now, on a couple of occasions, hosted these for us, and they've always been very open to trying to do everything they can to accommodate us, and I wanted to thank R.A. and forgive R.A. a round of applause, it would be greatly appreciated. Plus, he's also coaching, are you coaching basketball tonight?
Baseball.
Coaching baseball tonight, so he does everything, so. Well, I want to thank everybody for coming, we've got a few different areas that we're gonna cover, and we actually have a couple of guests with us tonight, and so, as you guys have seen from some of the stuff that we put on Facebook, and some of the other things going on, that the topic tonight is gonna be streets, paving, potholes, so forth, and everything that goes along with that. What a lot of people don't realize is, these are actually not all run through one department. The city has our service director, these guys both work for him, which are under the mayor's administration. We have our superintendent of streets, Kevin Monroe, and we have our, and we have our city engineer, Dan Meglin, who's hiding out out of camera shot over there. So, the, and I'm really gonna kind of allow them to explain how everything works in their different areas, but one of the things that we're gonna finish up with is a, that I'll allow Dan, when he comes up, to explain it, is we also have some new technology that is gonna be made available, that will not only allow us at the city to be able to target and look at these, the streets a little bit differently, but it's also gonna eventually allow you to do the same, which, as everybody knows, that's been kind of one of my big focuses, is whenever we can take information and give it to you, you're going to see that we do a better job. Because at the end of the day, this is your city, it's not our city, we don't, you know, we don't own it up around the horse trail Monday nights, it's yours. And so, that is, you know, anytime we can take information and take it out of our hands, put it into your hands, then we're gonna have a better city because of it, so. But we'll get to that in a little bit, the first guy I wanted to bring up is our superintendent of streets, Kevin Monroe, and he's gonna kind of explain what his side of streets and repair, and how his part of it works, and then we'll then go over to Dan and hear from Dan on how everything works on his end, so. Kevin?
If you would.
Why me first?
No, kidding, because Kevins speak first, we go Kevin, Kevin.
Oh, yeah, okay.
When we run out of Kevins, then we turn to the lesser names.
I'm, again, as he said, Kevin Monroe, City of Canton Street Department. Our responsibility, obviously, is to maintain the street, city streets, along with the abutting infrastructure, that being the weeds, litter, and that sort of thing. Currently, I'm sure you're all aware of the dilemma we're having with potholes, and that's always a problem we have, particularly after a winter season, the freeze thaw cycle kind of wreak havoc on our, on our streets, and we end up with potholes galore. And right now, we're battling through that, we have no less than four crews a day filling potholes. Our problem is that, at this point in the game, the material, material we use for patching is not necessarily the best material, but it serves as a temporary repair. Following, following the winter program, we will follow up with the proper material to patch these, these streets for you. Ideally, ideally, we'd like to see ourselves in a position where we have no potholes, but needless to say, the very nature of the, the street itself just inevitably results in pot marking. We, we try to stay on top of the potholes by utilizing our employees who are out to notify us of any situations they see, and put us in a position where we react proactively, or I shouldn't say react, proactively, but we're proactive in our approach to a pot, pothole repair. We don't see them all, we miss some, and when you, as a motorist, encounter a problem with your streets, please call us, let us know. We oftentimes will hear from people after they've had an incident, where they've bent a rim or destroyed a tire, and when they, when they contact us, they're angry, and we hear expletives about what happened to their vehicles. Well, if you see a pothole and, and it needs repair, don't wait until, I mean, call us, let us know that there's a pothole. We're, Canton's a pretty good-sized city, it's a city that, that has in excess of a thousand lane miles of road surface to maintain, and we're not, as, as a department of thirty employees, we're not gonna see every, every pothole that's out there, so we rely heavily, we rely heavily upon those of you who are out there driving around and encounter a problem. So, we have, our numbers are in the directory, or you can contact your councilperson, and let him know of issues, and they don't hesitate to make sure we become aware of those potholes as well. So we strive diligently to keep the potholes repaired, to present you with a road surface that's, that doesn't wreak havoc on your vehicles, but we can't always stay on top of that situation, so we do our best, we put out as many resources as we can to take care of those street, and those issues with regard to pot marking. If you have any questions, or if you have anything you'd like to point out, or suggestions, anything that might, might help us in our, in our working, I mean, we would certainly appreciate that.
And I would like to point something out, because we have a few people from this neighborhood, but Chris and others back from that area, you recall, right after Christmas, we got a pretty, pretty heavy snow, and back in your neighborhood, many of the streets are very, very narrow, they're not much more than that. And so, December 26th, December 27th, I started getting a whole lot of phone calls from your neighborhood, and I'll just assure you that they weren't calling to offer me and my family a Happy New Year. So, by the time the second snow came around, started seeing that the streets back there were beginning to get piled, and this is a big change from over there. Well, and so I started getting calls over there, and you go, "Oh, thanks, you got those things done." No, I didn't get those things done, here's what I did, I called this guy, Kevin Monroe, and I said, "Hey, listen, we've got some very narrow streets back there, and I, and obviously, we can't get a large city plow back there, but is there something we can do?" With, by the next snow, Chris and some of the others back from your organization will notice, boy, that started to happen. The, the point of that is, is that a lot of times when these things get done, you know, myself, or John, I forgot to introduce earlier, John Mary Olfamore of Seven, you know, we'll, we'll get calls and go, "Oh, thanks for taking care of that pothole, thanks for getting that street plowed." Well, the real heroes of that are Kevin and his department, and Dan and his department, and these are the guys that are actually out there doing the work, so, particularly on behalf of the guys back there, and the shirts you couldn't miss from a mile away, I want to thank you for helping and getting that taken care of, 'cause I know it was, it was long, long needed, so thank you on that, sir.
Well, I don't, I don't wanna take credit, I mean, oftentimes, and to be perfectly honest, we, we have a, a structure that sometimes doesn't lend itself well to being efficient. Unfortunately, when, when you're governed by a union contract, you can't always place your people in a position where they're, they're most efficient, and sometimes you just end up with a person in your ward who's unfamiliar with it, because we have to, we have to offer overtime by seniority, and that doesn't necessarily mean that the person who's working in the area is as familiar with it as another guy who may be sitting at home, or may be in a different ward because of the timing. So sometimes, it, it all boils down to timing, and you all, you may find that today, our efforts are considerably better than those last week, so I'm not gonna take credit, it's just, oftentimes, just the luck of the draw, and I hate to put it that way, but that's, that's the reality. We do, I mean, any, any public official who doesn't take pride in, in having a superior performance, there's something wrong with that public official. So, I'm, I'm no different, I want, I want the street department to be as effective and, and as efficient as it humanly can, but sometimes, unfortunately, we fall short. And, and once you do fall short, and you bring it to our attention, it's our, it's very important to us to make sure that those who have the front-line responsibility are aware of the issues that you bring to our attention, and that's all it boils down to. You contact your, your councilperson, your councilperson contacts me, I contact the foreman, the foreman then contacts the people that are out there, and through that chain, I think you, you should see improvement on a constant basis, so that's what it boils down to. I can't take credit, although if things are awry, I have to bear the blame, but that's the reality of being in a position as a department head, that's our reality.
He may not wanna take the credit, but regardless of that fact, I'm gonna give it to him, so. You know, I think what we're gonna do is, if it's okay with you guys, we'll, we'll hear from Dan.
I have a real quick question.
Sure, go ahead.
When you're dealing with potholes, a member of our neighborhood association has done asphalt work, and he said that the proper way you would wanna do it is to put the tar down first, before you throw it in there?
Absolutely.
Do you guys actually do the tar?
What we, it's called a, it's called a tack, we apply tack before you put the, it basically glues, it's like a glue, it glues the asphalt to the, to the pothole. So, yeah, we do, if they're not, and, all right.
And second to that, are they tamping it down?
I was just gonna go there, I was just gonna go there. I, our standard operating procedure requires that all asphalt, once applied, is compacted some way or another, whether it's with a roller, whether it's with a tamper, throwing asphalt in a pothole and slapping it with a shovel is unacceptable, that's totally unacceptable to me. And, and when I come across employees that have done that, it upsets me, and I, and I read the riot act to the employees who are guilty of not tacking. You know, I've, I've been out, and I, and I, I have tried to work with the fellows, I'm getting kinda old, and I can't, can't keep up with them anymore, and I know when you're, when you're using the hand tamper, that thing is heavy, and after a while, it wears on you, but you have multiple people on the crew, so you can pass it around. Tamping is, or I shouldn't say tamping, but compacting is required, and we don't expect it to be by the vehicles that drive over the, the asphalt, should be done by the people who are putting the asphalt in the holes, absolutely. And if you, if you see people, if you see our employees who aren't compacting it, I, you know, give us, get, get the equipment number, give me a call, because I do not, that is unacceptable, that is totally unacceptable.
As part of our neighborhood's Navarre Road, and there's a lot of trucks that's on it, and when you do basically a Band-Aid, it's no time at all till it's gone, and it's actually grown in size, so.
Okay, yeah, tamping is required, absolutely.
And the tar?
And the, what we call the tack code, yes.
I, I think what we're gonna do is, we're gonna hear from Dan, and then, and kinda hear what, obviously, what his end of it is, and if you guys are okay, then stick around for a few minutes, we'll take any, any questions towards the, the end of that, is that good with you?
I'm good with that.
That sounds wonderful. All right, now, what, let me just say, as we bring this guy up, is that my, my experience with the engineering department is, you know, and obviously, I've been in office now for just a little over a year, my experience with the engineering department is, is pretty simple, is that, and very similar to how it is with streets, is that guys like me throw out ridiculous requests, and under no, for no reason whatsoever should we ever expect that it could actually be accomplished, and then we turn it over to Dan Meglin, or we turn it over to Kevin Monroe in Streets, and I'm like, huh, man, how did that thing get done? Because it was ridiculous for me to even ask. The engineering department, these guys, I assume they must know witchcraft or something, 'cause these guys are magicians out there, they really do pull off some amazing stuff, and, and Dan is simply the best at what he does, and one of the things he's gonna show you is a new system that we have, that I've invited our friend from the repository to come down and see as well, is, I threw out an idea, I have no idea how to do this thing, none, but it just struck my head, and I mentioned it to the service director, who mentioned it to Dan, and lo and behold, these magicians over at the engineering office have put this thing together, and you guys are gonna get a chance to see it tonight, which I'm pretty excited about. Now, if you wanna know, by the way, the difference between a regular nerd and a super nerd, okay? Anybody can get excited over bailouts, and wars, and really big exciting stuff, but when you get excited over street paving, sewer line extensions, you know, and we say we're gonna extend a sewer line, and I'm like, oh, man, that's great, that's awesome, that's how you can tell I'm a true geek. And, and I, I don't wanna call anybody name here, but I think my, my friend Dan qualifies in that group as well, so.
Absolutely.
But I want to have everybody welcome our city engineer, Dan Meglin.
Thanks. Well, Kevin's good at throwing on the flowers, and I appreciate it. One thing I do wanna do is, is thank you folks for coming out, I wanna thank Kevin for giving me the opportunity, and myself, and Kevin, the other Kevin, the opportunity to come out, 'cause one of the biggest challenges we have is trying to get the word out, what we're doing, trying to get input back from you folks, so that we can have a dialogue, 'cause it's not, just as Kevin said, it's not a one-way show, we're not up here doing our thing, and independent of what the needs are with the city, we want input, we want your feedback, and young, some of these young new council members, it's been, in a lot of ways, have brought the pressure, 'cause they have come in with a lot of great ideas, and a lot of excitement, and enthusiasm, and passion in our truly public service, so it's, it's very great, thank you there. Also, a gentleman, Korean War veteran, thank you for your service, I don't know if there are any others out there, but we do appreciate it, another fellow back there. Okay, with that, we'll start talking about engineering and our geeky stuff. One of the things Kevin asked us to do is put together a map of our pavements, and how bad condition our roads are in, so that not only we in our little smoke-filled rooms trying to figure out how we pave, and what we're gonna do, but so that everybody can see what's going on, and it's a much more transparent approach. The good news is, we pretty much had this map available, we had to tweak a few things, we're still in the process of updating some things, but what we did is, we put together a map, and it's based on pavement condition ratings, okay? All these pretty different colors represent different items, and different levels of condition of the street, and I have a, I have a hard copy up here, and I'll leave it with Kevin, too, where you folks can look at it afterwards. I put that up there, so we could kinda zoom in on your ward, and maybe get a little better chance of seeing what's going on. The general gist of it is, if a street is shown in red, it's in poor condition, if it's in orange, it's in fair condition, green is good, very good is blue, and excellent is purple. So the ones that are primarily in purple were probably paved within the last couple of years, and so on. What you see, if I zoom back on this whole thing, and looking at this map, there's an awful lot of red, there's an awful lot of orange on there, and that's not a good thing. So what we have to do, the challenge that we have, is to take all those red, and if you put a dollar amount to the streets that are red, how much would it cost to resurface all those? We're in the range of about seven and a half million dollars to resurface everything that's in red. We have about 1.2 this year of resurfacing money, so 7.5, 1.2, there's an awfully big gap there. So what we're left with is, we have to make an awful lot of very difficult decisions, we know a lot of folks are gonna be very upset, but we have to try and do the best we can with the money, stretch it as far as we possibly can, try and use it most efficiently, and essentially have a kind of a worst-first approach, the roads that are in worse shape are the ones that get resurfaced. A few years ago, I've been with the city almost eight years now, I have some previous experience in the industry, and I become aware of what's called pavement condition ratings. It's an objective system where there's a manual, and you go out and you drive, and you look, and you say, hey, there's a crack here, there's a crack there, a pothole there, breaking up, broken up pavement, and you assign numbers to the roadway based on that, and that scale is from zero to 100, 100 being great, perfect condition, zero being in the worst condition, okay? And you develop these pavement condition ratings. So we worked with some folks from the outside, from the Ohio Department of Transportation, we worked internally with some of our folks, and this was about seven years ago, and we went out and we looked at all the streets in the city, and we developed these pavement condition ratings, that's basically where this chart comes from, okay? These are all the numbers, poor, poor condition represents a number, and it's probably in the range, that's a range, and it's probably from about 50 to 65, okay? That's what we would consider poor, and then 65 to 70 would be bad, and so on up the scale. So what we've done is taken that number system, boiled it down to a color-coded map that you can look at, and it's easier to interpret. So anyhow, we developed a system of prioritizing, or of identifying the pavement condition ratings in the road. Back in the old days, and Kevin can speak to this far better than I can, he was faced with the same problem, back in the old days, the street department used to actually run the pavement program, the construction contract, as well as try to prioritize the roads. They didn't have this pavement condition rating system to work with, so what you were left with is Kevin pulling out his hair, trying to sort out how do you balance the needs, that seven million dollar need with the million dollars available, and quite honestly, those numbers haven't changed much since I've been here, there's always been a tremendous gap. And there was an awful lot of influence from, I guess, the political side of things, council members that had a lot of seniority, they had a lot of pull, so they'd come knocking on Kevin's door, or ring his phone, and they'd say, "You need to do my work." And they do the same thing with the mayor, and the service director, and so on. So, the system and the ability for Kevin to truly prioritize according to what he really wanted to do was hampered by the political system. Well, what we've been able to do is take this pavement condition rating and change it from an objective, or a subjective type of approach with a lot of politics involved, into an objective, numbers-based type system that still allows input from the council members, but it's not taken to an extreme, okay? And as a result, we get a much more consistent approach to our paving across the board. The other thing that was bad, and would be a real detriment in the case of Kevin or John here, they're younger, they were members of councils, they wouldn't have much pull, so if not for this type of approach and this type of system, these guys not, might not get much paid. So what we saw, when we looked at the whole city after years of this tremendous effort on Kevin's part, but a lot of politics, you had inequities in how things were paid, we're trying to correct for some of those. So some of those more seasoned council members right now, they get a little irritated sometimes, when they don't have as much paid as they think they should, but we can point to the numbers and say, this is the way it is. Okay, so that's a little bit of background, we start off with this pavement condition rating, we go out every year, and we try and update this map, and update these ratings, but that's not the whole story, that's not the end. What we do from there is, we recognize that, you know, if it's an alley that sees a couple cars and a garbage truck, it's probably not as high a priority than, say, Navarre Road, or Tuscarawas, or what have you, the major corridors. So we have to take those numbers, and, and that pavement condition rating, and came up with a system saying, okay, if this is a high priority road, high traffic counts, then we subtract a few more points, well, this is like golf, so the lower your score, the more likely you get paid, okay? So we take that poor rating, and we ducked a few more off to make it even worse, making it therefore more likely to get paved than a street that doesn't see many cars. Then we take that list, and we send it over to the street department, and Kevin and his guys, and his foreman and forewoman sit down, and they, they sit around the table, and we want their input, 'cause they're the guys out patching the potholes, they know better than we do, sitting in our engineering offices, you know, playing cards and such, they know better what roads actually need paved, they know where they get the calls, they know where they have to show up all the time, and it's a problem, so they get a cut at it, and they can add some priority to it as well. So we take their list of roads, we, they, we give them a starting list, and they take their, their ideas, and they say, okay, yeah, we give this one a little higher priority list, this one, and they prioritize. Then we take that list, and we send it out to our fine councilmen, and we just send them the roads in their ward, 'cause we don't really want them worrying too much about what goes on with the other boards, we want them to focus on their roads, because those are the ones they should know about. And we send them out to them, and we say, you know what, kind of the same idea as the folks in the street department, you're the ones getting the calls, you're the ones that have to deal with this front-line type of thing, the lists we send them are all roads that are in poor condition, so we're perfectly comfortable knowing that if they pick any of these roads, they need paved, it's a good use of funds, so we don't mind if they say, well, this one has more residents on it, I get more calls, I want this to be my higher priority. This one, on the other hand, you know, it may be even a little worse condition, but I don't get many calls on it, it's, it's more of a through-traffic type thing as opposed to residential traffic, so it's a little lower priority for me, my phone doesn't ring as much about that one. So we allow them to assign some priorities, so they can do priority one, two, three, all the way, usually down to 10. So then what we do is, their top priority road, we deduct some more points from that score, okay, again, being the lower the score, more likely to get paid. So we do that with all the council members around the city, and then we come up with a list, and we kinda shuffle all those dollars, or all those numbers out, after we have the input of the pavement condition ratings, which come from our office, the input of the road traffic counts and prioritization, which come from our office, we have the input of the street department, the guys on the ground making the, making the repairs, and we have the input of the council members. Add all those things up in our little fancy spreadsheets, rank them, roads that come out with the lowest number, those get paid first, and it's as simple as that. So, that helps us to try and put a very objective approach that's visible, anybody can look at these numbers and say, we did the best we could to spread the work around. Now, we do take it a step farther then, and we, we wanna spread the love to a certain extent, we wanna try and make sure that there's no wards that don't get any streets paved, we wanna, we wanna make sure there's a little bit of a distribution around the city, but we also don't say, okay, every ward gets a hundred thousand dollars, and that's it. So one day, one, or one year, one ward might get a little heavier amount of work, the other year, they might get a little lighter amount of work, it really, we let the numbers drive the process.
And last year, my friend tells me I'm out of camera shots, I'm passing this tape, last year, as it happened, what I said with Dan was, you know, I was coming in, I was fresh, you know, my phone obviously hadn't begun to ring a ton, 'cause I'd only been in office just a few months by the time that we started putting this list together, and I said to Dan, "Well, listen, you've got an engineering degree, trust me when I tell you that I do not, so what I want you to do is, my, you know, I want you to use your expertise on this." Now, this year, we're gonna do a little bit different, and that's why this meeting's here, but the way it turned out last year, of the first nine on that list, just so happened that four of them were from Ward Five, just happened to work out that way. Ball over road, I know, now, not a lot of people... Ball over Road, I know, now, not a lot of people maybe drive down Ball over Road all that often, but you may not realize it, but you do. Because if you ever go down to Taco Bell, or you ever go down to Arby's down on Cleveland Avenue, you're going over that. And how long was that? I mean, that thing was on the list for forever, I'm sure. I mean, it was rated at like a 42 or something. I mean, it was essentially, you'd be careful your car didn't disappear on the way, just kind of follow in. So just to give you an idea, that's, you know, how some of those things can happen too, but there's not a lot of people who live back there. Now, we all drive that road, whether you realize it or not, because it's in between our ward and a fairly, you know, busy area down there. But it just, and so I asked Dan, well, listen, you know, if that's the one that's rated the lowest, let's get at it. So, Dan, would you mind showing a little bit on the, how the programming works up here and going through that a little bit of that before we...
You know what? I don't have the spreadsheet and the numbers, and I apologize, I didn't bring that, I didn't know we were getting into that level of detail. The, what we do have is the map, and what I intend to put out on the website at the request of a council member is this map, so people can go to the city website and take a look and get a sense of what their dollar, or what the condition of their street is. Of course, you folks know what the condition of your street is, but what you don't know is how that compares to the other areas. So this helps to give a kind of a little more citywide perspective, so.
Now, oh, I'm sorry, one last thing, he talked about the council, you know, approach, our position in that. With the time, and Dan, obviously, I don't want to cut you off, so anything else you want to go into, that's perfectly fine. But what we're going to do, and as we go along, my input this year is coming out of this room. What we're going to hear, and obviously, you know, and you guys, even I haven't seen what that list is, but we do want, all of us here, want to hear from you as to what streets you're seeing, and I'll be taking notes over here on my phone to make sure that we fill that in as well. You know, it's 2013 now, I'm, we may not be in a paperless society, but I'm a fairly paperless council member, so I just type it all right in there so I can have it to go back on later. So as we go along, you know, if anybody has, you know, I know Chris back here has some streets, one in particular she would definitely like to see. I know Mr. Harvey has got a couple of them that he would like to see done. So that's what we're all here for, is to hear from you guys, and so.
What do you think about doing this? And we'll throw this out there, rather than us standing up here and you guys yelling, hey, do this street, do this street, why don't we pass around a tablet, and you write down the street that you want to see paved, if there's one in particular you want, and then you just pass it around. As it goes, if somebody else says, yeah, I agree with that, put another check, put a check mark by it. Would that be okay?
Yeah, I think we can absolutely do that.
And then we can keep talking about some other topics while that's going around. Now, if you say, hey, I want that street done, but I also want this one done, write that down on the list too.
Absolutely.
If I bring a street up and ask the other people who agrees with me.
You want to do it that way?
That way.
Okay, we can do that. Mr. Harvey?
I say Navarre Road needs fixed road, bad.
Even, but what part of it?
All of it.
Okay. Because I agree with what he's saying, you got Logan Trucking over here that's putting excessive wear on the road and coming, getting on and off the freeway here at Harrison, and when the big rigs are turning and they're dragging up tires, they do a lot of damage to the road surface, and I realize they pay taxes to be on the roads, but, you know.
In my experience on Navarre would be that the, or at least, obviously driving through, that from Claridan Avenue over to, you know, probably going, Claridan Avenue East is where I see, you know, obviously our bridge, Dan, by the way, is the one who's helping us get that bridge down, for the record. Slowly but surely, it's coming around. The, from Claridan Avenue back east, particularly once we get over to Harrison, and going east from there is where I see the most wear and tear. Any experience from you guys on Navarre Road? Does anyone disagree on the Claridan East, Navarre, or excuse me, Harrison East? Or does anyone think that west of that? And west, obviously, would be going down towards five points.
That's bad.
You think it'd go west then?
That's a good point. Let's talk about Navarre real quick.
Okay.
We have it up here on the screen. From what Kevin's saying, he's saying from Claridan, which is right here, this direction is in worse shape.
That looks like Harrison from back here, because there's a freeway on ramps.
Is it ramp?
I'm sorry, you're right. You're right, you're right, this is Claridan.
There's Claridan.
Yeah. So you're saying this is in bad shape this way? Our map right now shows that this is definitely in poor condition. Here's going to be one of the challenges. We can rank that in this group, or the councilmen can rank that, say, this side, that that's our top priority. Well, that's in blue condition, okay? Compare that to the rest of the streets. So this is what we get into, and this is one of the challenges. It is a high-volume road, so it's going to get some points deducted or better chance of being paved there. But the likelihood of that section of Navarre that's in blue being paved this year, quite honestly, is pretty unlikely when you compare it, even if you say that's your top priority. Because you've got a lot of other streets that are pretty high-volume in some cases that are far worse.
Dan, before we jump on to other roads as well, let me ask you a question. 15th Street, when you get down by US Steel, the old US Steel over there, there's a section there, and I know you guys in the back of the room are very familiar with it, where it's extraordinarily uneven. Now, how would you take that into consideration as far as doing it, when you're going, Chris, help me out, if you're going east, if you're going eastbound, it's about Henry Avenue.
East to Cleveland Avenue, that's where the big dips.
There's a very, yeah, that's a good way of putting it, this is a very large dip in the road right there, when you're going, I would say, eastbound, is it worse, you think?
Yes, from Henry heading towards Cleveland Avenue.
Where we at, 15th Street, you mentioned?
Yeah, 15th Street and Henry, east to Cleveland.
You're close, keep going right near, no, keep going to the right, I'm sorry, you're way off now. There you go, see that red section?
Yep.
Yep, that's it.
I'm glad that somebody's got eyes good enough to see that from the back of the room.
Very good eyes.
Because I would get close enough to the map, I'd knock the screen over and still wouldn't be able to see it.
Kevin, anybody who knows you knows that's true.
You betcha. We can zoom in there.
Oh, there's a map up here, look at that.
There you go. That clearly shows up in poor condition, so we agree 100%.
Right.
And it probably has some pretty high traffic counts too.
And now that you've enlarged that part of Navarre Road from Harrison, is that yellow, is that, or is that orange?
This is orange, which is poor.
What condition, is that poor?
Poor condition.
Okay.
And maybe that's the section.
I'm sorry, fair condition, fair condition. Red is the worst, poor, and then fair is orange, so the next one down.
And before we get away from Navarre, Kevin, I'd like to tell you that on Navarre Road, just past 77, there's literally a pothole that's too dirt and gravel. And I mean, if you don't swerve into the middle lane, it's bad.
I'm glad, I'm glad that the right Kevin started jumping that one down. There's another, before we move on, Mr. Harvey also, in addition to Navarre, before we go away, I know you live, Mr. Harvey lives up at the 21st Hundred Block of Sandwith, and down around Sandwith and 18th is an area that is very choppy. And I know that, that we, well, before we start moving back into somebody else, I know that I would like to bring that one up as an area. 18th particular, I would say, when you...
We put Wardson, 20th.
Yeah, when you go, when you go, Wardson, Sandwith is the worst part of 18th Street right there. And right at the intersection of Sandwith and 18th, it's really, I mean, now, Kevin's crews have been out, and you guys have filled in the potholes out there, but there's a lot of filling in there, let's put it that way. It's more filled potholes than it was original asphalt at that point, right in the middle of the intersection.
So we're right in here with Sandwith, so that 18 is red.
18 to Wardson.
Yep, yep, so that's a real good shot. Now, the other thing, before we abandon Navarre Road, I will tell you that sometimes we miss. And sometimes, you know, we may have done some of these ratings in the fall, and you get a bad winter, blows up. So I will go back and all that sort of guys that go out in the field and actually do the ratings, because I'm in myself. And we'll have to go out and take another crack at Navarre and take a look, because who knows? I'm not doubting what you say. Our whole goal on this thing is to make sure we're comparing across the city. And if it has deteriorated exceptionally quick, which does happen, then we need to rescore it, change the color, and get it higher in the rankings.
Chris, we have Chris Duff back here. Hi, Chris, how you doing? Chris brought her own seat tonight, so she didn't, she didn't trust.
Is somebody writing this down?
I've been jotting them on my phone as we go, so.
All right, because my memory...
Yeah, no, no, we're good.
Since I'm at it, let me ask you this question. On Quimby, this terrible, kind of that cat and ally outfit, all them trucks and stuff, they got that road tore up. And right across from the duplex to Free Wardson and Sandwith, they cannot keep that road, they was out there putting asphalt and everything on, two weeks' time, it's tore up. I think it's all in big trucks. Is there any way you can go against them companies and see if they will help pay to fix them roads?
At this point, not that I'm aware of, unless they do it out of goodwill. I don't know that we have any authority to go in and say, you know, your truck traffic is damaging the roads, that we have to pay for that.
Now, Pennsylvania, and I know you know this, Pennsylvania, who's, they've been, they've experienced the drilling quite a bit, and also a lot of mine, you know, of coal mining and everything else. Pennsylvania has an interesting system. Now, what's different in Pennsylvania is that basically all the streets are state-maintained. We have very few that are state-maintained in Ohio compared to them. Now, what Pennsylvania does is, if you want to go back, let's say that Mr. Harvey leases out to an oil rig to go put on his property out there, sorry to pick on you, sir, but, you know, since you brought it up. Mr. Harvey leases out that land, and now we know they're going to have to go down Quimby, or they're going to have to go down Sandwith or whatever to get back to that oil rig. What Pennsylvania does is says, okay, you can't go on that road with a permitted load, meaning something that's going to be over 80,000 pounds, or something that's going to be, you know, 14 wide, or whatever the case may be, unless you get a road bond. And then if the road gets tore up, they use the road bond. Now, in Ohio, at this point, I don't think that the DOT has anything like that in place that I'm aware of, so.
We do. I'll address that real quick. Ohio's put in place what's called a Road Use Maintenance Agreement, RUMA for short, and what that does, that has been one of the laws that was passed through the state legislature. That requires, if it's for one of these oil sites, if you have a drill site, that the company that's doing the drilling has to go to the local folks that maintain the roads and negotiate with them how to best deal with that road. And so they'll go to municipalities, townships, counties, what have you, and they'll work out ahead of time what they're going to do. And usually, it's not just a bond. What they do is they'll go in, these roads in many cases are very rural areas, on roads that just were not designed or maintained for that kind of traffic. So these companies will go in ahead of time typically, they'll replace bridges in some cases, they'll replace culverts, they'll reconstruct the entire road, they'll widen the road. I have some friends that work for the Columbian County Engineer, and they said the revenue that they're generating through their, these Rumas, is actually greater than their normal budget that they get. So they, as a result of the oil and gas over that direction, they have more roadwork underway than they've had years past.
Not that I expect to see a lot of drilling done in the city, but there's some companies that come through. Chris, I know that you, Chris Duff back here, who's from SING, the Sowers Involved Neighborhood Group. By the way, we're going to, one of these days, we're going to pull Dan in along with the Parks and come up with some thoughts over on Maryland Boulevard, but that's not for tonight. I'm just giving you a little heads up that I'm sure Chris would bring up if we weren't on Streets.
I have some thoughts on that as well.
But Chris, I know, has brought up some concerns with the street that she lives on, which is Belmont.
From Linwood to Maryland Avenue. It's worse from Roslyn to Maryland on Belmont, but it's just as bad up.
Belmont. Are we in the right spot here?
Belmont's going to be actually just west of where we are. Do you know where Sowers is on there?
No, it's the other side.
Yeah, you need to go on the other side.
Yeah, there.
Linwood?
Yeah.
I'm not sure we're there. Okay, well, this section's all red.
Okay.
Right in here.
Yeah.
We agree, it's in terrible condition. Isn't it nice when this actually works?
They told us last year that we didn't even come close.
Really?
Last year, and what happened also, by the way, was at Ron's request, I sent an email to Dan last year as that we were moving forward later in the year, and what happened was Belmont was nowhere near the number that it even showed up on my list. So I had asked Dan to send somebody back out and re-rate that, which is what he had just referred to as, you know, that happens after the winter. And so what it appears is that that has had an impact on Belmont, because last year it was nowhere near that, and now this year, we've got it in red. So what happened was, if you want to see democracy in action, Ron calls his councilman, who calls city engineer and says, what the hell's up with Belmont? You say it's in good condition, and it's not on this list. Well, he sends somebody back out, they take a look at it, and they go, huh, Kevin's right. Well, Kevin wasn't right, it was Ron and Chris who were right. And so that's how that thing went. Let's jump, if anybody else has a street, I see a hand back there, but I'm far too blind to tell me who it is.
That's right. I just have a question.
Sure.
What color is 13th Street from Rath Road to Maryland?
Which is right where we're at, by the way, at the moment.
I'm wondering what color it is.
Dark gray.
From Rath Road to Maryland.
I gotta move my screen, don't I?
No, you're in the same.
Mine the same.
Yeah, if you go just north of Belmont, just north of where we are.
Oh, here's 13th there.
Yeah, but you don't go all the way to Rath though, do you? I think you need to...
Move my screen, don't I?
You're in red. I thought it was red and some orange.
That looks to me to be red and orange. By the way, while Dan's doing this, can I ask you guys, what do you think of having this tool available to you guys to go to go on and look at? Is this something that you guys like? Is this something that you would use on the city website?
I'm just wondering what color it is.
Is that a, I know Mr. Harvey's on the city website every day. Anybody else?
What color was it? I didn't get it.
Maryland, here's, this is 13th, right?
Yeah.
Right here. Maryland, west is red to, is that Rath?
No, that's not Rath there.
It's not Rath. What is that?
Well, regardless.
It's not.
It's red? Yeah, you've got some red, you've got some orange on 13th, so there is...
You're multi-colored. You're multi-colored.
Yeah, yeah. Take a color.
Hello.
Any color.
What street is that? Got to be a label. That is Rath. That green line is Rath.
Okay, so we got Rath to down to...
So this is Rath. See, Maryland is red, which would be poor condition. East of there to Claridan would be orange, which is in fair condition.
So they have a bad spot.
Yeah. And the other thing too, that's important to note, now, we're not going to go out and just, you know, patch or resurface one block typically. That's where Kevin has some techniques, some preventative maintenance things. They've gotten really good the last couple of years, going out, and if you've got a section from here to the wall, you know, five, eight feet wide, they have some equipment, some great expertise, they'll go out and mill that out, resurface that, and that might buy us three, four years in some cases, because the rest of the road might be pretty decent, but we had a bad spot. So his guys are great at doing that, and that actually allows us... So, his guys are great at doing that, and that actually allows us to kind of extend that. Now, in this case, potentially, we would resurface this area, but not mess with the two adjacent stretches, because those are large enough, which you don't want to do in order to maximize your money and the efficiency of your contractor. You don't want to jump them all over. You guys know, that just costs money mobilization, picking up your equipment, moving it. So, you want to get them in an area, you want to let them run, because then they can be the most efficient, which means their prices are lower, which means we get more with them.
Who's, uh, does anybody else have a street that, that they think is a particularly bad condition, that, that they think should be a priority for this year?
Kevin, I know it's outside Ward Five.
Yes.
But I will say Eleven Street between Raff Road and Luthfield and Harrison Avenue.
Okay, yeah.
It's right there.
Yeah, now, that is.
It is red.
That is Ward Three, but we're not gonna discriminate against our friend, Mr. Griffin, while we're here. Um, the, Merv, could you tell me again, Eleven from?
It's right there in red. Whoops. But I don't agree where it turns to blue, because Eleven Street all the way to Harrison is in extremely poor condition as far as I can see.
Eleven Street, so you're saying where it turns?
Even though they have it red from Raff over.
Yeah.
Goes on the backside of Canton Center.
Right.
That's, that road is horrible. That's probably one of the worst that I, I drive on.
Is that concrete? You know what? I think part of it is concrete, which is a whole different program. We've been going to trying to fix portions of concrete. So, that was definitely on our radar, and we have about twenty thousand dollars aside from the one point two that we put into concrete roads on an annual basis, that we'll go out and cut out slabs and try and replace them. So, that section of red that's concrete may get some attention, and I, that's why that one stuck in my mind.
Now, does the city do that? Do you subcontract that?
We subcontract that out. That's a little, these guys are really good at some of the things, but there's other things that looks just more efficient to these contractors.
Well, then, my big thing is accountability. If you pay someone to fix something, what kind of guarantee do we have? How long's it gonna last? I mean, I could come out there, mess up a few bags, and charge you a lot of money, and then, six months down the road, when you say, hey, it's gone apart, well, I did my job.
Did you get a bid in on that, Chris?
Almost.
Well, let me address that with, with our contractors in general.
Okay.
When we let a contract, now, that one, the twenty thousand dollars would be, the smaller we get, the pros is a little different story, but kind of the same rules apply. In our construction contracts, we do require warranties, particularly on concrete work, the hard surface type thing, concrete, asphalt. I believe they're a year or two years. I'd have to pull out the document to make sure it was statements at the time. Now, we do also do a couple of other things to make sure that we get the quality work. Number one, we use licensed contractors, so the contracts that we use, we try and focus on those that are actually in the city, and we know they're not going anywhere. So, when I call them up, you know, a year or two later, they'll say, oh, yeah, I remember doing that. I want to give more work in the future, so I'll come fix it, you know, so.
So, unlike the hail damage roofers that's back in Texas now, these people are still gonna be here.
You betcha. Okay. And, so, in addition to the contractual requirements of coming out to fix anything, we do try and use local folks, so that, number one, we patronize our local vendors. Number two, we have some good accountability. Number three, they're licensed contractors, so they have bonds associated with them. And number four, we have inspectors that go out and oversee the work itself. So, we want to make sure, you know, they may be pulling from Diana Reliable, any of the concrete companies, and that concrete comes out and it's tested and supplied, and we know it's good concrete, but you get a contractor out there and water it down, so you can stretch it a little farther. We have folks out there that are watching for those kind of things. We have folks out there that are making sure, in terms of asphalt, proper compaction, and so, we regulate that pretty carefully. We have approval and stuff.
Now, Kevin, when he was at our meeting, said that there's different levels of paving from just resurfacing to grinding down to bare and starting over. Who makes the determination on if it needs to just be resurfaced or completely from the ground up?
That pretty much is done in our office. Certainly, we're open to input, but that opens up a whole nother can of worms, and I'm glad that if we, let me come back to that. Let's, let's finish up our list of roads, and then if there's time left, we can get into the distinctions between resurfacing type projects and full-blown capital projects where we're doing whole road reconstruction. So, let's come back to that.
So far, by the way, these are, because in this case, in this case, we have all agreed with engineering on their assessment, so I just want to recap real quick, and then we're gonna see if we have any last suggestions. Mr. Harvey, uh, and was, the motion was seconded by Mr. Leach, has said, Navarre Road, it's in bad condition, and we looked from Harrison, we saw it was in bad condition, and then obviously, we.
It was in fair.
It was in fair condition.
That's one that we need to go out and re-rate.
We're gonna, we're gonna.
The whole stretch.
At the, at the request of Mr. Harvey, we are going to take a close look at Navarre Road, and we also look at Eighteenth Street, which is, was ranked as bad in the report. We're also gonna take a look at Quimby, as to the, the trucks and so forth going back there. We have Belmont that we, we took a look at, that is in bad condition. And then also, Merv, we'll have to touch base with Mr. Griffin, because I get no say on that section of Eleven Street, but we're, we looked at Eleven Street. So far, those are my picks, because they're your picks. Any of the streets, before we move on, jumping out, that we want to throw out there to you a look at?
Eleven Street South Bus from Raff Road to Harrison Avenue, I think you guys better take a look at that. It needs re-rate.
And that was the one, I think you were just mentioning, that was concrete over there?
No, that was, that was from Raff.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, yes. Okay.
What are the limits on what you said? The, the answer?
From Raff Road to Harrison. To go east to Harrison.
Yep.
One right there. So, we're showing a portion of that is in good condition.
And some of that actually has the big sinkholes in it too.
Okay.
Raff Road from, or excuse me, Eleven, from Raff to Harrison.
Yep.
Okay.
I wouldn't get these re-rated.
Okay. Good.
All right. The, before, by the way, we move on, and you, you had, you wanted to bring up on resurfacing. Mr. Monroe has asked that, we talked, it was another program that we wanted to bring up in regards to roads, and I'm gonna give the floor back to Kevin real quick.
We did get one more road. Smith came from the back.
Oh, Smith.
Yeah, that's four, five, and three.
Yeah, he, believe me, he, last time we were here with Griff, he said, now I got the two of you together, I'm gonna put this one on there, so yes.
So, that's on your list.
I'm gonna make sure that one's on there.
I think Kevin believes me too, because I drove his car with him in it down that road.
Well, while he's doing this, let me talk about capital projects. There's some roads that really are just beyond resurfacing, and in many cases, that's a result of sometimes base failures or bad drainage, various other conditions. And we have to take a look at those roads. We don't want to throw them good money after bad by just resurfacing. You know, resurfacing should typically last ten to fifteen years, and if you put it on a road that has base problems, it can only last five years. So, what we try and do is look at those roads and develop a capital project, which would include a simulated structure to drainage facilities, you know, sometimes full-depth reconstruction when we get down below the base, dig up the concrete or asphalt or stone and replace that. Now, I'll tell you, those roads, when we go into a capital project type scenario, now you're talking full-blown engineering fees that may range from a hundred thousand to a million dollars. If you're talking road projects that go minimum of usually half a million, up to three, four million. So, and, and there's a time period associated with developing those projects. We then go out and try and get grants to fund it, because the city doesn't have nearly enough money to fund those. Most of our capital projects are funded with, in significant part, by grant money, whether it's state, federal, state grants. So, we do try and look at those, because we won't want to throw good money after that. One of the other tidbits that I was asked about previously, back in the day before they either had milling equipment, which is what you go out and grind off the asphalt with, or somebody was penny wise, dollar foolish, and decided just not to spend the money on milling, they would just go out and overlay the roads and just build up the asphalt, so it's nice and thick and you can't see the curbs anymore, and your drainage catch basins are down in a hole, so if you hit it, if you tire, you lose a tire. What we try and do in those situations, once we come to the conclusion of, this is the list of roads that we're gonna pay you this year, we go out and we take another look at them, and we look at those curb reveal situations, and in some cases, if there's that much asphalt on it, and there should only be that much, we may mill off three or four inches of asphalt, pay a little extra, but then we put back an inch and a half. And what that allows us to do is try and correct some of the sins of the past. You get that drainage working again like it's supposed to, you get the curb reveal, which helps keep people from running up in the roads. So, you know, we're continually juggling these balls and prioritizing with limited resources, trying to be the most efficient we can, go after grant dollars. I can tell you, some of these residential streets in the, in the low-volume streets, they won't rank or score on any of the grants, because the grants are kind of like our pavement condition rating, so many points for this, so many points for that, that type of thing. We've tried on some of the local residential streets, and it's just not really listed, competition's too tough, they don't get funded. So, that puts them kind of in a limbo type situation, where the city doesn't necessarily have the money readily available to go out and fund an entire project themselves. We also don't have enough priority on that road to be able to get grant money, so then we gotta make some tough decisions, and occasionally, it is the opportunity to research a similar for the best. So, we're continually balancing all those different things. So, that gives you a little insight of some of the challenges.
Guys, we're, we're closing out on seven, and we always try to keep these things to an hour if possible. I, I wanted to bring Kevin back up, because he mentioned to me, Kevin, we're gonna start pointing, I wanted to bring Kevin back up, not this Kevin. I wanted to bring Kevin back up to talk about another program we have, just briefly, and then I will finish up, and I'll get you guys out of here in time to squeeze in some dinner. So, Kevin?
Just very briefly, we, we have a program, it's called Beautify a Neighborhood, and, and typically, it revolves around neighborhoods. And what it's designed to do is to partner with neighborhood groups to clean up your, your neighborhood. The city street department provides, it, it's the entire department at your disposal to help clean up, you know, certified or specialized areas of the city that you believe need attention. For example, we'll, we'll go out, we'll cut all the vacant lots in an area, we'll, we'll trim tree branches, we'll, we'll pay a, a company to trim the branches that are problematic, we'll, we'll patch, we'll sweep, we'll, we'll pick up debris, all of those things. And we have twelve dates we set aside per year. Of the twelve dates that were set, set aside for 2013, I believe only seven or eight of those dates have been taken. So, again, if, if you have an area that you would like to have the city street department assist you in cleaning up, give us a call, or give your councilperson a call, let him contact us, and we'll work up, come up with a, a cleanup schedule for your, for your particular neighborhood, or your, whatever, it doesn't have to be a neighborhood, it could be an area that you think needs cleaning.
I was just on that website yesterday as a matter of fact, and it looked like only three possibly forms was taken per year.
Well, it hasn't been updated, but, but there are about five left, I think.
And we've got a couple, obviously, you can see the shirts in the back, and we also have a couple from Sing. So, believe me, when I, when I tell you, you're gonna see a couple more people jump in on that, Kevin.
Take advantage of it.
Thank you.
It's a great program, seriously.
But, but you had said that you would come out and help evaluate the.
No, we come out and we work with you to clean up that, everything that needs to be done, and that does.
There's so much of an area that I can even think about, and in fact, Kevin, you had the lights installed and Henry Avenue under the bridge there, and on Henry Avenue, on both sides of thirty is overgrown, but I'm not even sure what kind of weed they are.
Okay.
Big stalk, but also the retaining fences that keep people from going up have been tampered with.
Okay. Oh, and when, when we talk about credit, by the way, we talked earlier with, with Kevin, I didn't place anything. This all went out through Dan Meglin here, who, and believe me, you got a, a very active member of your neighborhood, who made sure we knew exactly how many days it had been since that was first requested, and which is, by the way, you know, the fire lit under our ass that we needed, okay? So, thank you. Guys, I, I'm just gonna, I, I'm gonna, yes?
Kevin, I have another question. There was also another site, we have a neighbor that, that comes to our neighborhood meetings that has been taking care of a adjoining property to hers.
Yes.
What's that called, where she can?
There's an adoptive site.
Yeah, oh, and, and we have new, new guidelines, way better, under the land bank, which we talked about at the, the last meeting I was at. I'm telling you, if you are next to a vacant lot, okay, and you want that lot, it just became so much easier compared to how it had been in the past. If you're not calling me, it's because you're nuts, okay? Call me on that. Call me, email me, let me know, the whole deal. I'll get it to Lem Green over at the, the land bank, and we will get this thing done. So, and, and, and I know exactly which property you're talking about, and we've already been, been working.
When we did the walk through the neighborhood.
Yes, the, the Hooper House. I know exactly which house you're talking about, and we've already put Lem in contact with her, so, Mr. Harvey.
Who pays the taxes on that?
Right now?
On that lot? If I, I want the lot, do I have to pay all the taxes?
If, if we take that empty lot and we give it to you, then it becomes yours to pay the taxes on. Now, what we tell you.
That might run into thousands of.
Oh, no, 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 no. No, no, but you're not paying the back taxes. Well, under this new program, what they do is, the land bank has the ability to abate those back taxes, and if it's a lot that connects to yours, okay, they can take that, and they'll turn that over to you for a grand total of one hundred bucks. And then, at that point, your only requirement is, number one, that you take care of the lot, you know, and that you're, it's not, we're not gonna still be out mowing it, which is, now Kevin, now you got two Kevins yelling at you, okay? And then, number two, is that you have to combine that with your property. So, that, but listen, call me on that.
I just got the, from my wife, cut it shut.
Yeah. Dan wants to say one more thing, and then we're gonna go.
I'm gonna throw a quick teaser out of here. One of the other initiatives Engineering's working on, we're trying to recreate Canton as a livable community. I think that's what we all want. We want Canton to be a good place to live, work, and play. We define livable community by some of these other things. This is about an hour presentation, so I definitely am not getting into that. Here's one of the real-world implications of trying to create a livable community. If I can get out of this. Go quick, real quick. What we're trying to do is take streets, and we have some large projects, like our Tuscalawas Street Project that we did a few years ago, our Twelve Street Project, Mahoney Road Projects, Walnut Downtown. We're trying to take streets like this, add some improvements to the facades, include some streetscape and some bike lanes, and change that street into a place that we want to live, work, and play, and that people want to come back to Canton. That wasn't a street in Canton, but it very easily could be. So, when you saw in the newspaper a couple of weeks ago, the fine article that was written about the West Husk Project, that's one of those future projects, several years down the road, but it's coming. With that, I have one more map that I want to show you that this evolves into. We have put together, much, much like Starr County Park District, and. and the rest of the modern world and cities like Columbus, we have started to develop a bike trail, biking trail system throughout the city. And we've come up with this map as a draft list and location of those. Canton, we're lucky, was set up. We have the streams that come through. We have the west branch of the Nemishewant, the middle branch, and then the east branch, all coming together. We've been able to utilize those corridors, because a lot of them are parkland. Worked together with Starr County Park District and our own city parks to build bike trails down through those. These sections are already built down through here, up through here. The overall goal is to bring those together into downtown and then create kind of a ladder effect, where we have crossings, rungs of the ladder along 12th Street, 62, 47th Street, tying into coming out 6th Street a little bit, trying to tie in eventually, running out 12th Street to the towpath trail in Maslin, heading out Mahoney Road to Louisville, Plain Township, North Canton South. So we're trying to set this up. We want impact. This is not on, this is not on the website yet, but we want input from you folks and your council members as to what you think of some of these routes. Of course, you can ride your bikes anywhere, but these are the trails, sometimes bike lanes on roads, sometimes share the roads. These are areas that we're identifying as higher priorities. So with that, I'll be done.
Thank you. Guys, can we give a round of applause for these guys over here? Thank you. These guys, these guys worked all day and came out here and to hear from us. And also, I want to thank everybody for coming down, because the fact is that this is how we do things in Ward 5 now, is that you, these guys don't hear my favorites, they hear from you. And so I think we got a lot of good information, and so I want to thank you guys for coming out. One last plug before on your way out the door. It's the second time we've done this at the Babe Stern Center. These guys are great, okay? I mean, I tell you what, 27 years ago, I was a skinny little nerd with thick glasses running around here talking about all this smack about what I could do in the basketball court. I couldn't back any of it up. Okay, now I'm a 35-year-old skinny dork with thick glasses running around the halls talking a bunch of smack about what I could do in the basketball court, but I can't back up. But the fact is, I, there's no way I'd be in city council today if it wasn't for Dave and Tim and Bob and these guys, and they're really fantastic. So I want to thank those guys for having us down here again. All right, I'm gonna stop talking. You guys go ahead and get out of here. Thanks for coming down. And I will, of course, see you guys around your neighborhood association meetings and around the neighborhood, so thank you.